All right, well, good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting of the Harrisonville Board of Aldermen to order. If you would please rise and recite the pledge with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and now that you're back at your seats, I would like for us just to pause just a moment to remember Captain Johnny Coe, whose funeral was today. We could just, please, just have a moment of silence. Thank you for that. I had the privilege of attending the funeral with some others from the city this morning, and we have a heavy heart this evening. We lost a true friend and a great employee and a true warrior for the city. So our condolences to Jennifer and John Wesley and Colleen and Johnny's parents and brother and sister and other family and friends. All right. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, ma'am. Alderman Davidson?
Present.
Alderman Zaring?
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Present.
Alderman Reese?
Present.
Alderman Milner?
Present.
Alderman Turner?
Present.
Alderman Franklin? Mayor Bowman?
Present, thank you. We do have a quorum. We have no ceremonial matters this evening. Mr. Ratliff, did we have any agenda request forms turned in by the public this week?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on then to the approval of our minutes, and I would ask you, if you have a cellphone in your pocket, please mute it at this time. And then when we go through the Zoom meeting, if you're not speaking, please mute your microphone so that we minimize some of the feedback that we're getting. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and move on to the approval of the minutes. First is the Board of Aldermen, the regular meeting from January 4th. I'm looking for a motion.
Make a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Alderman Turner with a second from Alderman Milner. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Thank you, those minutes are approved. The minutes of the work session of the Board of Aldermen for January 4th. I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion from Alderman Turner with a second from Alderman Zaring. All in favor of approving those minutes, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Thank you, those minutes stand approved. Moving on to the agenda items. Mr. Fellziner, are you on the call? Council Bill 3.
I am. A resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, approving the appointment of William Mills to the Board of Aldermen.
Thank you very much. Most of you know Mr. Mills. You know that he was a former mayor at the City of Harrisonville, and I am beyond thrilled to bring him to you and to recommend his appointment to the Board as an Alderman Ward 3 to fill the vacancy that we have there by Mr. Miller's resignation. So I'm looking for a motion.
Make a motion to approve his appointment?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion from Alderman Dorhoff with a second from Alderman Davidson. Roll call, please.
Alderman Reese? And Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Zaring?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Thank you. Did you get Alderman Reese's vote?
I can see her communicating aye.
Okay, Alderman Reese, thank you. Well, Council Bill 3 is approved then, it becomes Resolution 2021-003. So the Ward 3 appointment office. So we're gonna do like the last meeting. City Clerk Barnett is gonna administer the oath to Mr. Mills, and then Mr. Ratliff is gonna turn his laptop around so that the camera will pick that up for you all, so everyone who's on the Zoom call can see Mr. Mills being sworn in.
Yep, I'll read it first, and you'll just repeat after me. Ready?
Ready.
All right. I, William Mills?
I, William Mills.
Do solemnly affirm?
Do solemnly affirm.
That I possess all the qualifications?
That I possess all the qualifications.
Prescribed for the office of Alderman?
Prescribed for the office of Alderman?
Of the City of Harrisonville?
Of the City of Harrisonville.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States and of the State of Missouri?
Of the United States and the State of Missouri.
The provisions of all laws of this state?
The provisions of all laws of this state.
Affecting cities of the 4th class?
Affecting cities of the 4th class.
And the ordinances of the City of Harrisonville?
And the ordinances of the City of Harrisonville.
And that I will faithfully demean myself?
And that I will faithfully demean myself?
In the office of Alderman Ward 3?
In the office of Alderman Ward 3?
For which I was appointed?
For which I was appointed?
On the 19th day of January 2021?
On the 19th day of January 2021.
Congratulations. If I could just get your signature on both these, and the ones for you and the ones for me.
So Alderman Mills is now signing. You know, Zoom really changes how we do things, but I appreciate the fact that we can at least let you experience this swearing in, even though you're not physically present with us at City Hall. Congratulations, Alderman Mills. Welcome back to the Board. We are thrilled to have you, and I am thrilled to now have a complete and full Board of Aldermen again. So thank you again to Alderman Franklin for stepping up, and then to Alderman Mills. All right, moving on then to Council Bill 04.
A resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville authorizing the city administrator to waive inspection and permitting fees related to projects to be completed within the Harrisonville School District in the year 2021.
Thank you. I know you have some documents. You have one recent document that was sent to you by email today. That was some additional information compiled by Mr. Arthur. And I know we have Mr. Minching, our school superintendent, on the Zoom meeting with us this evening. And so do you want to begin with Mr. Minching? All right, Mr. Minching, go ahead, we're all yours.
Well, thank you, Mayor Bowman, and thank you to the City Council for allowing me to speak this evening. I appreciate it, and just to give a little background. So in my previous role as superintendent of the East Buchanan School District in the City of Gower, we built a school. It was roughly $10 million for high school. At that time, I requested a waiver for permit and inspection fees, and really, it's been a while ago, so I hadn't thought a whole lot about that until I got a bill this week. So we had an anticipated bill for the first two phases of our project, which comes in between $10 and $15 million for permits and inspections around $45,000. Let's put that in a little perspective for us. And I shared this with you in the letter that I sent. That, that's roughly a full-time teacher for us. And so just requesting, if we can, to have the opportunity to waive those fees and inspections. I know that it is extra work on the city. Just did a little comparison of other school districts around us. Center and Oak Grove have completed $20 million projects recently, and kind of what, you know, there's really no standard for what cities do. So it is a, it's a request I'm reaching, and I just know that in these difficult times, we've all had to come together, and I would appreciate it on the school's behalf if the city could help us in this manner. Similar, I used the comparison, the analogy in my letter that, you know, we've done a lot of contact tracing for the Health Department. In fact, we've had to hire part-time nurse, substitute nurse, so that we could do that, because the county just didn't have the resources to do that. And so we're kind of asking for action in kind, I guess. And we feel like it's the benefit of the city and our community for the school, if we can have those fees waived. Understanding that still our contractors, our electricians, our mechanical, our plumbers would still have to be permitted through the city. Any subcontractors, contractors, and stuff would be permitted by the city. So that is my request. Again, I am grateful for the opportunity to even ask, so thank you very much.
Mr. Minching, would you give an overview of those projects to the Board this evening?
Absolutely. So the first two phases of our project involve the Career Center. There's gonna be an addition for our adult nursing program that comes through a grant, actually, from the CARES Act to expand the adult nursing program. Then there's some upgrade to our mechanical systems, some definite safety improvements with the vestibule entry into the Career Center. The addition of one more program. I think we all understand the growth of career education, how important the trades are, and so we're looking to expand one program. We're gonna expand the AG portion, classroom, expand the FIRE program. It's in a pretty small facility right now, so be able to expand that facility. So a lot of work at the Career Center. The middle school needs some HVAC work, some, just some renovating. We have some water drainage issues that we need to work on, some expansion kitchen areas, cafeteria. It's a renovation-type area there, just so we can expand the room, the area a little bit. And then the ECC, there'll be a total revamp of the entry there, which will be primarily centered around safety. So if you go into the Early Childhood Center right now, it's a single-door entry, so it'll be a vestibule entry, you know, with safety glass. We put safety barrier up on the CCC too, so there's a lot of safety involved in it too. And then at the parking lot there. So we have the, again, this is tied to safety, but we have the bus lane that goes right through the playground currently for the Early Childhood Center. So we're going to shave that parking lot, regrade it, and then reconfigure that parking lot completely so that it won't, there won't be any buses going through the playground. It'll be a separate playground. Two bus loops, one for the middle school and one for the Early Childhood Center. There's some work at the stadium that needs to take place. There's a wall that needs some work. Track needs to be resurfaced. So that's, now, an HES, I apologize, I forgot HES. There's some safety work there too. So there's a vestibule entry at HES, but it's not, once you're into that second layer of doors, you're into the building. So it'll be, it'll funnel the traffic through the office. And so, and again, safety, safety glass, and then some minor site work too, so. I think that's it. Lot of stuff going on.
Lot of stuff going on, for sure, absolutely. It's an exciting time for the school district. Could I ask either Mr. Ratliff or Mr. Arthur to give an overview of the city's permitting and where the $44,886 figure came from? Either Mr. Ratliff or Mr. Arthur?
Mr. Arthur, I'll let you go ahead and go through that.
Yes, okay. So to start out, the architects, Hollis and Miller, are the ones that have submitted permit applications. The total value of the work they've submitted is just barely under $15 million on their valuations that they put on their permit apps. So when I looked at the permits themselves and was asked to look and see if there was any way we could discount permit fees, I based my original discount recommendation on some very specific things, all things that I knew. It sounds like a lot of, a part of the valuation is gonna end up being based on exterior work too, and site work. Now, the site work, depending on how much impervious surface may be added, will still have to be looked at by the city engineer to get stormwater issue recommendations, if there are any. But originally, my biggest drop on the valuation of the work was basically based on a prevailing wage situation. And had this have been private sector who weren't under a prevailing wage valuation-based scenario, the valuation of the work would have been substantially less, as submitted to me. And then I looked at our current budget, how our department figures our budget, what that's all based on, personnel, overtime budgets, what our anticipated workload is currently, which is a guess. We've discussed before, I never know what's coming in the front door, really. And so I can't really, at this early stage of the year, I can't really gauge what our workload is gonna be for the year. So I thought, everything considered, I was very comfortable with my first recommendation. Now, you have to remember that my position here is not to grant waivers of fees. The way fees are figured by building departments is fairly standard, but wavering of fees will always be up to the governmental body and not a person like myself. I think that once I start plan review, I will have a much better handle on the resources that will be necessary from the city if we manage the code part of this job. And I've already spent some time with Hollis and Miller's people on a lot of consulting, helping them with some code modification requests. So that's kind of the overview as far as the work itself and how we came to where we're at right now. The, my correspondence, as far as the fees, has been with the construction management general contractor firm. So that's kind of where we're at, as far as how we got to the fees.
Okay, I would open it to the Board for questions now, from either Mr. Arthur or Mr. Minching.
I have a question.
Yes, Alderman?
Mr. Arthur, I mean, right now, we're saying just under $50,000 for what's been submitted, but if there's any re-inspections or external expenses, then that cost could climb quite a bit?
Well, no, sir, really. If we stay with our discounted fees, and one thing to remember is that, per our fee schedule, which we just adopted in August of last year, which is based on our departmental budget concerns, the original fees would have been $89,000, plan review and building permits, based on a $15 million valuation of the work. And we got to the $44,886. By me looking at the project and considering the prevailing wage aspect of it, I felt that a 50% discount was judicious. Now, as far as inspections, I really, I can give you an overview. So we do inspections based on each item that needs to be inspected. And until I do plan review, I don't even know the total number of types, a type of inspection. Give you an example, a type of inspection is mechanical, a type of inspection is electrical. And then there are sub portions of that, depending on the stages of the job, anywhere from underground, under slab, rough end, in-wall, above ceiling, vinyls, acceptance testing, if there's any alarm work, stuff like that. So I really can't even tell you right now how many different types of inspections there'll be, let alone how many of each of those I think will happen. And I actually, even after doing plan review, I couldn't give you a concrete number on that. I don't know how many inspections will fail and have to have re-inspection. And I have no idea how many partials will be asked for. A lot of times, projects that are fast-tracked, so to speak, like this, contractors will want to keep moving through the job, will do small parts as they go to keep all the different sub-trades coming in behind one trade going as they move through the project. So I really, I really can't give you a handle on the total amount of time that we're gonna be spending on it. I can tell you how much time I think plan review will take, and that's in my longer write-up, my old write-up. So it's, it's, it really, in my mind, it boils down to, you know, I'm not against waiving fees, and I'm not for it. That's, I have to be, my job, neutral in that regard. And will there be an impact to our department's budget? I can't tell you that at this time, because I don't know what work, I know what work I have on the book right now, but we're only in January. So does that answer your question, Matt?
Yeah, I just, I mean, with the $48,000, I just didn't know, I mean, if we could end up jumping to a significantly higher number, I mean, with all the unknowns, I mean, what would have been?
Madam Mayor?
And I believe, Mr. Arthur, the $44,886 is about a 50% discount, is that correct?
That is correct, ma'am.
Okay. Someone asked?
Madam Mayor?
Alderman Milner?
So Chris, is that the fees that you're talking about, or the timeframe that you're talking about, is that going to be during, most of that will be done during your normal workday? Or are you thinking most of that time is going to be in overtime? Because, I mean, if it's during the normal workday?
I would assume, now, I don't know how the contractors are planning on running the job yet. I would assume it will be normal working hours. The effect, though, that I have to look at the entire department's budget. So if enough work comes in to where maybe we have to inspect, just for example, over at Aldi's at the same time or the same day, there could very well be overtime involved. My best estimate at this time is that we probably, and this is based on previous years I've worked here, how much work comes through the door. I would say we currently have a 60% chance of requiring overtime hours, more personnel, or third-party assistance for our inspections this year. Now, again, that may change once I've done plan review. I know very little about this work, only what the architects have contacted me regarding specific code issues. One up at the Career Center, that we ended up doing a code modification request, which I will approve. And another one at the ECC, same thing. So that's about the extent of what I know about this work right now. Now, I did pick up tonight that there's gonna be a lot of exterior work. That's gonna help in this overall picture of the financial part of it, as far as my department. Exterior site work has quite a decrease in inspection requirements.
I just would like-
Alderman Milner, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just, I know, you know, it is a big project, and I think the connection with the, between the city and the schools and the county and the hospital even are a huge benefit to us as a city, because with the improvements, I can see people looking at our facilities and thinking, oh, wow, this is gonna, you know, a great place to come and live, and that's what we are trying to get to within our, for our city. And I know in the past, on projects, we've had, Harrisonville Villas for one, we had to hire additional help to come in and help with inspections and stuff like that, Chris, too. So this wouldn't be a first time if we had to do that.
If I may say, I think you're probably referring to the Villas project, okay? You know, that project, when I started working here, I kind of inherited that project.
Sorry.
And you're probably aware, because, ma'am, you were on the board during all of that, and we had some issues. I'm not a huge fan of third-party, depending on who it is. And I think I had a pretty good write-up on how I feel about third-party and the cautions that I see that a jurisdiction should think about when considering that. All I can tell you right now is I do believe that there's a good chance that we could possibly come to the Board in mid-year for a budget amendment on our personnel costs, possibly. Believe me, I will do everything I can not to have to do that. But I just, there's too many variables and too many unknowns for me to guarantee that we won't need a budget amendment come July or August to carry us through the end of the year regarding personnel cost. I hope we don't, I hope, my hope is that we can handle it with sporadic overtime, and it would just depend on what other work comes through the door.
Madam Mayor, I got a couple of questions.
Alderman Zaring?
Yeah, actually, I got a couple of questions. One's probably for Mr. Arthur, the other for Mr. Ratliff. Start with Mr. Arthur. Really, what we're talking about cost-wise to the city is personnel hours, the time spent, basically, time working, right? Paying personnel to do the inspections and those types of things, is that correct?
That's correct, but that's not how we budgeted the department. So every hour I work would be useless without my support staff. Just because I'm out in the field doing an inspection doesn't mean that somebody here isn't doing something that supports me. I can't do my job without a lot of support. And that's one of the reasons why these budgets for a department like mine are looked at on a department level.
Okay, thanks, that makes total sense, I understand that. I just, I just want to make sure that I got that the cost, it really is the personnel, the time personnel are putting into it, and possible overtime cost and those types of things. I think Alderman Milner was kind of hitting on what I was thinking as well. A lot of it, if it can be done during normal business hours, it's normal business that we've already planned and budgeted for. My other question would be for Mr. Ratliff. Can, are you able to, like, break down to us? We're talking 47- Like, break down to us, we're talking forty-seven thousand dollars, how's this impact the budget that we just, uh, approved? And is there a way that, uh, come mid-year? Uh, come back with, uh, hey, we need fifty thousand dollar budget adjustment, are we able to cover that comfortably as a city right now?
Um, the, uh, the safest answer is, uh, hopefully. We, you know, as you, we, uh, built reserves within, uh, the city's budget, as you all are aware of. And hopefully those stay the same and, and we're being very cautious. Uh, through these first, especially for the first quarter and, and end of the second quarter. Uh, just making sure that we're, um, not having any, uh, revenue issues. Uh, you know, with this COVID and the vaccinations that, uh, is a part of that. Um, we, we don't know, and if I could, to kind of piggyback on to that. So to let the board know, uh, in this, in the state of Missouri. Political subdivisions within the city are not required to get city inspection, so. Not just the school district, but if we had for some reason a fire district or a water district. If they would do some type of building within the city limits. Uh, the state law that's out there is they don't technically have to go, uh, to meet city's code. Uh, most of this political subdivisions do, uh. Work with the cities and to follow city code because if they don't and there's some kind of, uh, mishappen. Uh, or tragedy, uh, it makes them very, uh, largely liable. Uh, because they didn't have the city's, uh, more standard codes. Uh, in the city's codes that, uh, bring us protections. I can, I can give you other school districts within Cass County that, uh, went it on their own and. It end up being, it end up being very costly for them. Um, as, uh, the superintendent pointed out, it's pretty, um. All over the board, uh, what cities do with the school districts. I can tell you, in my previous, um, life, we made an agreement with the school district where they agreed to pay our cost. Uh, whatever that cost was, like, uh, Mr. Arthur is pointing out, based on what. Those, um, those hours are in that fifteen million. Uh, of the overview, a lot of that is dependent upon, as he said, uh, uh. Different things that could come up, are they gonna wanna, uh, do partial inspections, are they gonna wanna do full inspections? And those things that are caused, so we came up with a, a agreed upon between the city and the school district. Of what they were going to, uh, pay per hour. For our inspectors being out there and doing the inspections. Uh, how much they were gonna pay per hour of our plan reviews, uh, to make sure that. They were paying for our actual cost and that the city was, uh, not, um, losing. What their actual coverage was for the actual cost. Um, as you all know, we don't do this to make revenue. Uh, for the city, this is, uh, simply as Mr. Arthur pointed out, making sure we cover the cost of our budgets. And the cost for doing business. And, uh, my previous, previous life, uh, was. A, uh, a similar type of thing, but the state law, I was in a different state and the state law was a little bit different. Um, so in, in the state of Missouri, it's been, uh, pretty standard that, uh, there's a. Uh, between the political subdivisions, uh, and a type of agreement that could be put in place. As, um, Mr. Arthur pointed out, the, oh, the always biggest concern, anytime you bring in a third-party. Um, it would have to be somebody that the city and, uh, the school district would have to agree upon. Uh, because, uh, I, I have a lot of high respect for Mr. Arthur and his expertise. And, um, and working with anybody that would be a third-party. Uh, at the same time, we also don't wanna put, uh, our codes department. I do hope I have to come back to you all, uh, Alderman Zaring, in middle of the year and say. We're having so much building that our code department can't keep up and we've gotta hire more staff. Um, I hope to have that problem, uh, as we go on and, and I, I look forward to that problem. And, um, but it may be something that, uh, we can look at with the school district. Uh, if the board has several options tonight, you could waive it completely. Um, and, and hope for the best with our budget, uh, and with our staff to be able to do that. Then you could also, uh, direct staff to negotiate, uh, with the school district to pay. Uh, and come up with a per-hour, uh, basis for a plan review and for, uh, inspections to make sure that. You know, that's being agreed upon and, and signed off upon, uh, but between the both, uh, the entities. Um, you could keep the, um, the rate the same as what, uh, uh, Mr. Arthur had pointed out. Uh, we do, uh, as was, was pointed out earlier. Uh, partnerships with the school district and partnerships with the county, uh, partnerships with the state. And go to the federal level is important for Harrisonville. Um, and as staff, as a city administrator, I don't have the authority to just waive fees. And so that's why it's here with you all tonight, uh, to come up with a formation that you feel is, is fair and equitable. Uh, between us and, and the, uh, school district. And, uh, hopefully that, in a long about way, Alderman Zaring, uh, answers your question. You know, I kinda can keep talking if I need to, but don't need to.
Thank you, Mr. Ratliff, other questions from the board?
Madam Mayor, I did have one more that.
Yes, sir.
On there and it's for Mr. Arthur, can you tell me, or tell us, um, when? When is the bulk of the inspections happen, is it in the beginning of the project, middle of the project, end of the project? Or is it pretty much steady all the way through?
Well, it's kinda hard to tell you until I've even looked through the plans. I, I don't know what kind of work I'm looking at. Normally, for most construction work, it's at the beginning and, and ha- and, and, and in the middle. And a- as you wind up a job, you're, you're left with finals and acceptance testing. So the bulk of it, I, I would say would, would be in the beginning and toward the mid, mid portions of the job. Is that what you were?
Yeah, that was perfect, that answered it perfect, I appreciate it.
And could I just add one thing, please, uh? Just to, to keep in mind. When, when our department was budgeted. We have a target percentage of expenses we try to recoup in revenue. It's not like our revenue is trying to pay all of our expenses. Our target is thirty to thirty-five percent. Of expenses covered by revenue, as far as permit revenue, okay? Before the, the newly adopted fee schedule, that number was in the seventeen percent. Plus or minus average. So just, I just didn't want anybody to think that we were trying to, to cover every last dime. That it takes our department to operate based on permit fees. We, our target is thirty to thirty-five percent and that is a, a fair countrywide average.
Thank you, Mr. Arthur. Other comments or questions, Alderman Davidson?
Got a statement and then some questions. The school district, just as a city, we're in, we're having an alliance meeting on Wednesday, that's what we are. We're supposed to work together to bring best for our city. Um, I'm not supportive of us charging the school district anything that wouldn't cost us. The way I look at the forty-five thousand dollars is, I think Alderman Zaring hit it a while ago and I know that. That, um, Chris kinda. Uh, refreshed a little bit, but that's already budgeted amount that we've already put in the budget. Um, I, I do think that if we were gonna have up and above fees, third-party fees or something like that, that's gonna cost the city. I think that's something that we need to have a discussion with the school district about. But as far as anything that we would have normally budgeted anyway, now, we have to bring because we've got so much. So much of building, which is gonna benefit the city, it's gonna benefit the school district, it'll benefit the school district. Because of what they're doing and because of what we're doing. Then I still think we could come back to the cit- to the school district and discuss those, uh, extra costs. Um, my question is, do we have any precedent on this, uh? I know we've already talked about the Villas, but any prior construction with the school district, uh, what we did with the hospital. Um, things of that nature, do we have, have we set any precedent on this, or is this gonna be setting precedent?
I might answer, uh, I know in one instance here. Where we had the documents reviewed upfront and we knew that it was not in the.
I've lost sound.
Don't nothing.
Is somebody talking?
I, I can hear you, but I, for some reason, I can't.
Just a moment, I have a little technical difficulty here.
I don't know sign language.
Can you hear us?
It's working, they said.
Okay.
Take your hand away slowly.
Yeah.
I'm not touching anything. Tough first night here. Uh, I know in the past where we, uh, did not have the expertise at City Hall. Specifically walking on steel beams thirty feet in the air inspecting welds. We knew upfront with the scope of the work, which you haven't reviewed yet, uh, Chris. Um, that a third-party inspector was gonna be necessary. And, um, and that was, uh, total just reimbursement to the city or direct pay by the contractor, I don't remember that. But, uh, that's how we handled that, so, but until you reviewed the documents. You wouldn't know if we were gonna be requiring a third-party, but, but in the past, yes, we have hired third-parties. Where we did not feel we had the expertise. On a large project also, um, maybe, I shouldn't say what project, cause I can't specifically. But, um, remember, but, uh, where we knew we weren't gonna have the time. To deal with it, uh, we, we've had third-party for that particular reason. Uh, uh, on, on an intricate, um. HVAC coupled with the smoke detection and the, uh, alarm system and the whole deal. So we had third-party there, I believe, on a, on a large project. So we, we have done it with third-parties before, but we knew upfront we were gonna do that and we had that already laid out with the. Entity or the contractor that you're, you're gonna pay this on top of, um. And, and I don't remember, but there were discounts involved, cause we weren't gonna be inspecting that. Anything, any other precedent, what did we do with it, does anybody recall what they did with the hospital, I'm just curious, cause they would be in alliance with the city as well.
You're talking about Cass Regional?
Y- yes, mayor.
I know that any of us were on the board at the time, um, probably Alderman Mills would be the only ones that would have the historical knowledge. Do you remember Alderman Mills, if there were any, um, discounts or waivers or anything, how did we handle the Cass Regional?
No, I was, I was only planning and zoning, then, but not the councils or no specifics.
Okay, then, one, one last statement, then, we're gonna have quarterly reviews, budget reviews, you know, we discussed that during the approval of the budget. Um, again, I'm not supportive of costing this, the school district anything that wasn't already part of our budget. But if there's gonna be overruns or third-party or things of that nature, I think it's something that we on a quarterly basis. Could have a discussion with our alliance with the school district. And discuss those charges with them and come up with an agreeable amount, if so, if we decide it's enough that we want to do that, that would be my suggestion, thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I could.
Yes, Alderman.
Uh, so again, Alderman Davidson, great point, and right along what I was thinking as well, that. If there was some sort of quarterly review to even. Just identify as we go along, are we going to be able to cover the cost, even if it is above and beyond what we would have already. Paid as well, but review the budget and make sure that, hey, we're online, cause I'm with Alderman Davidson, I think is. As much as we work together, the school and the city and the relationship that we have, if that's something that, uh, benefits our city and our kids. Uh, which we know that it is, um. I would say that we, uh, help them with that cost as much as we can and I think, I think it's fair, a quarterly review, just to say, hey. We can't cover that anymore because we're, you know, we're being drained out somewhere else or something else, so. That would just be my statement along with, uh, Alderman Davidson.
I, I would like to.
Thank you, Alderman Milner.
Agree with that, um, I mean, I think that's kind of why we set up our quarterly reviews on our budget this year, because. With COVID, we don't know what we're gonna run into down the road and, um. You know, we, we, we went through and we approved what we thought we could approve, but. We can also adjust as we go, as we need to, I, I agree with both. Um, Alderman Zaring and Alderman Davidson, I think we need to work with the school as much as we possibly can, because. I mean, they are definitely one of our top employers in district and we want to make sure that. We stay in good, in good, um. I can't think of the word I wanna use, but that we all work together as a, as, with a great partnership.
Okay, Alderman Franklin, did you have a comment?
No, I did not, I, I lost you guys, I don't have my picture, my video up.
Well, we can see you.
Okay, well, that's good.
Are there any other comments or thoughts from the board?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Alderman Dorhoff?
I, I agree with everything that's been said, I think we should do as much as we can to help schools, is there a way that we can just build this as a, a cost basis? So if there's, you know, third-party fees or, or overtime. Uh, that it's just on that basis and that alone and it minimizes any, uh, potential cost to the school district?
Mr. Arthur, can you respond to the question?
I, I think there's definitely a way we could work something like that, um. E- e- especially with the, uh. With the additional staff that I'm looking at for this year as far as administrative assistant. I think tracking. Specific cost to the school projects is definitely doable. And if the, if the board felt like they were okay with that and, and billing out on a, on a. Periodic basis, if we, if we went over the parameters of our existing budget. The, the only thing I would say is you, we would have to remember, like, what we've budgeted now. Has been budgeted to cover whatever comes through the door. For the whole year. And, and we were, we're, we're not gonna know, it, it's just impossible to. There's, there's too many variables that we cannot nail down at this point in time. To say that, okay, even though we take care of the school's projects. And we're still within budget, but how, how does that affect if we go over budget? After these projects or due to other work coming in the door, then how do we go back and substantiate that? Portion i- if we're going to, to bill out the school. Based on time spent or other expenses. Or other expenses. So we'd have to really think about how are we going to track this and how does it affect? Our original budget for the year. But it, it's really not that much different just because it's the schools projects. We would, we might have to do the same thing if we like. Like Mr. Ratliff said, if, if, if a bunch of construction takes off here in the city this year, we still have to look at, at these exact issues. It, it's just that. We were just fifteen million dollars worth of projects, you know, I think last year. And I don't have all the numbers in front of me, but I'm thinking we, we came in. At about eighteen million dollars worth of valued work last year. Now. To my knowledge, I can't think of much of that that was prevailing wage. So that was open market valuation of construction work. Now about. About seven million of that. Six to seven million is work that's still in progress. It came in late in the year. So for, for me, there's always this lag time that a, a year doesn't really close out. It never does because projects don't start in January and end by December. So we have to use averages and we, we have to look at things over longer than a year's period to see where we might project to be at. But I, I do think that. What the Aldermen are suggesting is, is definitely doable if that's what the board would like to do.
That kind of leads into my next question. It's why, you know, if it takes a lot of man hours to track this down. You know, I, I hate to see us spend five or ten thousand dollars trying to track all this down just to bill five or ten thousand dollars. I might as well just do a waiver and, and do away with trying to track all this down.
Couldn't agree more. You know, that, that there will be administrative costs to, to track a job in this fashion. That, that we normally wouldn't have budgeted for. I can't say if I think it would be five or ten thousand dollars or not. Like I say, I have, I haven't even been able to look at the, I just got the blueprints late last week. And, and I haven't even opened them yet.
Well, they're a big partner for the city. So I think unless there's some exceptional big cost that comes in down the line. I said, we just kind of work with them the best we can and. Help out our students in the district.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Alderman.
And I do understand what Chris is saying, but that's what budgets are about. That's what business is about. And I think more importantly, that's what a relationship that we have. An honorable and integrity relationship with the city that, you know, or excuse me, with the school district. We're, if we're going to be doing this on a quarterly basis, we're going to know what we're setting each, each quarter. I don't necessarily think that we have to have somebody necessarily tracking it, spending man hours doing that, because I think on an overall basis, I think Chris and his department will kind of have an idea. I anticipate that we're not going to charge the, the, the district anything if, if we go that route. But I mean, if something large would come in, I think that I would ask that, that they consider. That if we do have a significant charge of some kind that they would, they would assist with that. So. I, I still stand with what I was saying earlier. I think, I think we'll, we'll be okay, but we, we view this fully and, and involve the, the district and, and Mr. Mencing with this each quarterly as well.
Mr. Mencing. Can you address the comments that were made about if, if charges are exorbitant?
Absolutely. We're willing to work with, with whatever and I would be glad to, to, to evaluate that quarterly with Chris or Brad or whoever. Would like us to, to look at it and. Again, I just appreciate the consideration. One thing I guess I don't understand and Chris, this is a question for you and we probably could talk about it another spot, but I'm not understanding the prevailing wage aspect because. All our labor stuff has turned into the, into not the city. We turned that into the labor board. So I'm, I'm just not understanding how the, the prevailing wage aspect ties into it. I know it increases our cost. Associated with the project, but it's just additional labor cost.
Well, the, the way that ties in is so when, when permits are based on valuation. Whether it's you take square footage times a, a base amount, an average of construction cost, or you go straight to valuation. So when an architect or contractor turns in their permit application, they're turning in what is the total value of the work?
Right.
And if the, if, if it's a prevailing wage job, the labor portion of that total valuation of the work. Will be fifty to eighty percent higher. And so that's where that comes from. Whereas in private sector, if it's non-union work, the labor cost is going to be substantially less. Therefore, the valuation of the work that's reported to me would be substantially less.
But it's, but it's not going to increase your, your, your hours, right? Your man hours in your office.
No, sir. Doesn't include my, my part of it at all. It's strictly like, like if you, if you put a set of plans out to bid. What, whatever the low bidder is, that's the value of the work.
Right.
Right? It's, it has nothing to do with the jurisdiction at that point in time.
Thank you.
Alderman Mills, did you have a comment to make?
Just a, on a personal. The other side, being on Paul's side of this thing. On a couple of my projects. We did have a negotiated fee. So in, in the case with the city of St. Joe and Kansas City, Missouri. And most of that was done through my general contractor, Paul. So it was a cost basis. So a negotiated per hour inspection. But based on the history that the contractor had had, I relied on his knowledge not to exceed. So we would reimburse the city on a billing for inspections. Of an hourly basis. But. I know in that one project in Kansas City seems like we had a. The city was not to exceed a sixty some thousand dollar total billing on the project. So now I don't know where we landed on that. Actually, we didn't get to that mark. Now, if we would have gone over that mark. I suppose it's up to the budget of the city of Kansas City to make up the difference because we had it not to exceed. But that's how a cost on a couple of projects that I'm close to, we're close to.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Alderman.
I was just going to ask, because I think we're all pretty well in agreement there. How do we move the motion from here? Because right now we were supposed to approve. All of the fees. How do we move forward and make an emotion to cover what we've talked about?
Well, you may make that motion.
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
And state your motion.
To move forward with covering the school district's fees. To review on a quarterly basis. And to work with them in the future as we review it on a quarterly basis to cover any cost if they do get exorbitant.
So your, your motion is to waive the fees. Correct?
Yes.
Alex, can you state the way the motion should be made?
So from what I'm gathering is it should be a motion to amend the current resolution because right now the current resolution just says. That the Board of Aldermen hereby authorizes the city administrator to waive permit and inspection fees. My recommendation would be to include language in there saying, subject to a quarterly review, subject to expense tracking and for the city to work with. The school district should expenses get exorbitant. I can play with the language, but if there's a motion to amend covering those topics. Then it's reflected in the minutes, it's reflected in the resolution and I can work on amending the resolution to address what we've all discussed here today.
Alderman Zaring, did you hear that?
Yeah, and I'm comfortable making a motion that states exactly what he said.
All right. I have a motion from Alderman Zaring and a second for Alderman Davidson to amend. The resolution as it's printed with City Attorney Felsine. Providing the appropriate language for the wording of the resolution to take into consideration. The discussion that the board has made this evening in working with the school district and their need for permits for their projects. All right, I'll have roll call, please.
Madam Mayor, can I ask a question, please?
Certainly, Alderman.
I probably need to recuse myself from this vote.
Okay. So City Clerk, please mark Alderman Milner as abstaining. And then proceed with a roll call.
Could I have a?
Oh, sorry?
Yeah, I, that just somehow that seems a little bit vague to me because we're going to quarterly discuss. What, what exactly are we going to discuss quarterly?
We're going to review what the expenditures have been in the previous quarter.
Right?
And then make a determination where to go for the next quarter.
And, and that's my understanding is that we're going to review every quarter and reassess every quarter where we're at to make sure that we can cover. As a city that we can cover the budget on that.
So basically we're just, we're, we're excusing it for one quarter. And then we'll decide the next quarter what we do. Maybe I'm just not understanding this, Judy.
Go ahead, Mr. Ratliff.
The way I understood Alderman Zaring is you want to waive the fees. And as we do review each core. As we do the review each quarter, if there's a higher cost that's coming in. Then was anticipated. Then we would tell you all at that time at the quarter. That there are some higher costs coming in as a result of this. And we are also to, as the superintendent pointed out. If there is higher cost coming in that, that we would work with them on how to cover that cost.
Okay, when you say higher cost, are you saying? Higher than anticipated, higher than, higher, higher than what?
Essentially because we, we don't have all the information as far as like Chris hasn't had that time to go through all the blueprints. We don't know how many inspections. Are going to be asked of us, how many partial inspections, full inspections. So. If it becomes a lot of inspections and a lot of man hours that are being engrossed in it. And we see a lot of expenditure as a result of that, then at the quarter, we will let you all know, hey, we've had a lot of expense. That was going into this because right now we just are basing the fees based on the valuation that was turned into us, that it's a fifteen million dollar project. So when we, Chris had to give the upfront, like he would anybody else, when they give him an up, upfront. Value cost, he has to give them an estimated value cost of what the permits would be. Similar to like Alderman Mills pointed out, it's almost like a do not exceed, but. If it is coming in more than what was anticipated, that we would inform you as the Alderman in that quarter. And we would already be in discussions with the school district at that time.
Madam Mayor. Maybe to, to help Judy, excuse me, Alderman Reese in regards to this, maybe we can ask Alex, but maybe we can include. In his amendment that not only will we discuss it, but that will be. The first meeting of each quarter that will, it will come back to the board as a, similar to this. Going to the continuation of waiver or something of that nature. That way it kind of helps Alderman Reese. So. We're not only just saying this, but we're also going to bring it up at the first meeting of each quarter or second meeting each quarter. Maybe that'd be the best time because we'd have time to be able to review the prior quarter. And then at that point in time, it comes back to the board in a resolution such as this.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Alderman Turner.
I, I'm fine with all this and helping the school system and I mean, do as much as we can to help them, but I also don't want to. Inhibit or stop our future development, like all these coming in and stuff. I don't want to put anyone else on the hold because we're. Overusing our, our inspectors and our coaching department where. What if something was to come up and we, and they really swap and we really need to look at a third party venture before the quarter's up? How would we approach that?
That's a good point. Mr. Ratliff.
So Mr. Arthur is a very thorough person and those weekly reports that you all get.
I read them.
You will have, he will have that information for you all in those weekly reports as far as hours and inspection. So I would imagine, Chris, that would be. Fairly easy to just make sure that that information's in those weekly reports.
Well, I mean, I just want to make sure that, that it'll get a response or. All these gets delayed because we're too busy or, or something else wants to come in town and, and his turnaround. I know Chris is. Thorough, prompt and nice to be on time. And I don't want to push him to the brink that he's behind on everything and everyone's mad at him.
That's a good point. It's a very good point. So Mr. Mencing, you've heard the discussion here. Basically, my understanding is the board is, there's a motion. And the board is going to be voting in just a moment, but there's a motion to. Grant a waiver of your permitting fees, but to reassess that on a quarterly basis to make sure that the costs are not. Higher than what we anticipate based on the limited knowledge that we have right now. There's also concern by one Alderman. That other projects that are either present in the city now or coming into the city would not be delayed because of throwing all of our resources. Toward the projects with the school district. So I think my understanding is that the board is, is in favor of granting the waiver, but they want to. Reassess it and see where we're at on a quarterly basis. Is that something that would be agreeable to the school district?
Yes, absolutely.
Alderman Reese, does that provide clarification for your question?
Pretty much. Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Turner, are you okay now? Any other comments? Okay. I think you make a very valid point. You know, we are about. The strategic partnership with the school district. We also are about moving the city forward and we know we have Aldi here, you know, laying their foundation today. So. I think that's a very valid point. Mr. Felsine, is there anything else that we need to cover? We have a motion on the floor. Is there anything else that we need to cover from your perspective?
Yeah, I did want to make one. Comment that Alderman Davidson's suggestion came after the motion and second. So currently his suggestion that this comes back to the board at the first meeting of each quarter in the form of a resolution. Is not currently contemplated by the motion. So if we want to include that in the resolution, Alderman Davidson's suggestion, then there needs to be a new motion to amend the resolution that includes what we said before. And what Alderman Davidson's recommendation just was.
Could I change that to the second meeting? That way we give the court on a quarterly basis to give them an opportunity to be able to review everything. If that goes, if, if everybody is in agreement with that.
So would you say that once more, what your thought is?
It'd not be, it'd not be the first, it'd be the second quarter, excuse me, the second meeting after the quarter, not the first. That would be my only change if everyone is in agreement with that.
So we're amending the amendment. Correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
All right. Alderman Milner, you had a comment?
So you're wanting to do it on a, instead of doing it at our quarterly budget meetings, is that, I thought that's when we were going to be looking at this. It's during our normal quarterly budget meetings. Is that not correct?
That would be what I would suggest. I don't know that we've set when that quarterly meeting is going to be for the budget. So I would suggest they coincide with each other.
I think that would be the simplest thing for us to do.
Alderman Reese, did you have a comment?
No.
Okay. All right, Mr. Fels, if there's no other comments, I'm going to ask Mr. Felsine to read the motion. And Mr. Zaring, this is your motion.
Sure. So the original motion to amend would be to include language regarding a quarterly review of the project. A review of the cost basis or expense tracking. And to work with the school district to cover any costs, especially exorbitant costs. A further motion to amend would include that this matter. A further motion to amend would include that this matter come before the board at the quarterly budget meeting of the board to reassess. That is, I, that's the current state.
Alderman Zaring, is that your motion?
That is my motion, Madam Mayor.
Alderman Davidson, is that your second?
Madam Mayor, yes, it is.
And City Clerk, Ms. Milner is Alderman Milner is abstaining. All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Reese.
Yes, this is the amendment, correct?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Mills. And Alderman Milner is abstaining.
Thank you. Council Bill zero four passes with seven votes and one abstention. And becomes Resolution two zero two one dash zero zero four.
Mayor, pardon me.
I'm sorry?
Pardon me, that was just voting on to amend it. Now we need to have a second vote that actually brings the resolution.
Thank you for correcting me. May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
A second.
All right, so I have a motion from Alderman Davidson with a second from Alderman Zaring to vote on the amendment. Now I'll take Mr. Menching.
I apologize, I need to leave. We've got our own board meeting going. I just stuck a little bit longer, so thank you very much.
Go right ahead, all right. So I have a motion from Alderman Davidson on the amendment and a second from Alderman Zaring. I'll have a roll call on this.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Mills. Alderman Turner.
Aye.
And Alderman Milner is abstaining.
So seven votes in favor of the amendment to Council Bill four with one abstention. So Council Bill zero four does become Resolution twenty twenty one dash zero zero four. And now Council Bill five.
Council Bill five, a resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri approving the appointment of Kimberly Trobe to the Park Board.
Thank you. Most of you know Kimberly Trobe. A lot of you have bought appliances from Trobes. She applied actually quite some time ago to be a member of the Park Board. And I sent her resume to Mr. Perky. Who said he felt like she would be a really good fit for the Park Board. So I am pleased to bring her recommendation to you. She would fill the seat that was previously occupied by Alderman Franklin. And you know, when when commission members become members of the Board of Aldermen, they have to vacate their position on the commission. So Alderman Franklin has moved off of the Park Board, just like Alderman Mills is going to move off of the Board of zoning adjustment. So I'm bringing the recommendation of Kimberlin Trobe to the board and ask for you to consider her appointment to the Park Board. Now I would take a motion. Our discussion. Okay, I have a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Turner. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Mills. Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill five becomes Resolution twenty twenty one dash zero zero five. Kim, welcome to the Park Board. Do you have anything you'd like to say to the Board of Aldermen? Unmute your microphone and the floor is yours.
Hello, hi, everybody. I look forward to it. I've been a part of this city my entire life, so I'm really looking forward to being a part of Parks and Rec.
Thank you very much, Mr. Perky. Did you have anything you wanted to say?
No, like the mayor mentioned, I do think Ms. Trobe is going to be a great addition to the Park Board and we like to welcome her, welcome her aboard.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Kim. All right, moving on to Alderman and the committee reports. Alderman Turner.
The Park Board met, they're still getting bids for the outdoor pool concrete. Things are moving forward. Hopefully, we can be open on time or a little bit after. They are going to be really surprised and really like the new pool and get a good life out of it. And that's about it.
Excellent, thank you. Alderman Davidson.
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Alderman Franklin.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would like to welcome Kim Trobe to the Park Board. You will really enjoy it. You have a good group of people to work with and I congratulate you. And I am also excited that Mr. William Mills has joined the Board of Aldermen, looking forward to working with you as well.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Mills?
Twenty minutes in, my list is not long, so no report, your honor.
Thank you. I don't know if you were able to hear Alderman Mills, but he said he had no report. All right, Alderman Reese.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Milner.
I would like to echo Alderman Franklin's welcome to Bill Mills. Very excited to have you back on the board. We, along with Mrs. Franklin or Alderman Franklin, we we have a good board and looking forward to working with both of you. Also to Kim Trobe, very exciting to have you aboard. I'm sure Mr. Perky is is. Glad as well. I only have one other thing to say and Daniel, I guess I didn't need to abstain from the voting. Of the changing the resolution. As as I work for the school district, I felt that it was necessary for me to abstain from voting on the actual vote. So if you want to change that, however you want to do that, that's fine. I definitely approve the change to the resolution. If you want to put that in, whatever works.
Uh, thank you, we'll get something figured out.
Thank you.
I'll let Mr. Felsline address that.
Sure, I would say, and I was just about to message Daniel, I would say that you abstained from that vote as well. Just because the vote's already happened and it's taken place and it's been recorded, it doesn't change the outcome, so it's of no moment anyway, but that would be my advice.
Thank you. Alderman Dorhoff?
I want to welcome Alderman Mills and Franklin to the board, two great additions. And echo the mayor's sentiment from the beginning of the meeting that our thoughts and prayers go out to the Coaday family. And that's all I've got for this evening.
Thank you, Alderman Zaring.
Same thing, Madam Mayor, want to welcome and congratulate Ms. Trobe for coming in on the Parks Board. Appreciate, it sounds like she's done quite a bit for the city and appreciate her to continue doing that. Also, welcome Alderman Mills, you too. From what I know, you've done a lot for this city and given a lot of time to this city already. And thank you, sir, for coming back out and being a part of the board. I'm excited where the city's going and I think you and Alderman Franklin are going to be a great addition. To that moving forward. The only other thing I would have to ask. And I don't know how how our relationship is with the school as far as how much we communicate with them. I think tonight's vote would have went a lot easier. We wouldn't have had to go through as much. Had we, I I just keep thinking back to when we had approached them about, you know, combining, I think it was on the asphalt. Saying, hey, we want to make a purchase together, we can save some money. I don't know how much money we would have saved there, you know, thirty, forty thousand dollars. But had we been communicating with them sooner, maybe, or more on a consistent basis. Maybe we would have been able to save that money and then when we came to the vote tonight, we could have said, hey, we've saved the money here. It would make a vote tonight a lot easier. So that's just something that I think for further discussion later on.
Thank you, and I think Mr. Ratliff might address that, but thank you again for reading those weekly reports. Because that's how you know that we offered to go with them on the asphalt, but they weren't able to take us up on that. That's how you know that because you read that weekly report. So thank you for doing that. City Administrator report.
Yes, ma'am. The Hanger Repair Project A Bid Conference for all bidders is tomorrow at two o'clock. If you all recall, the first bids we got on that was higher than what we had budgeted. And so this has went out again and hopefully with some changes to that, we can get that within budget. The JCI staff or JCI industry staff reviewed our pumping operations at Lift Station Two. With a seminar to our city staff, MDNR will sample our wastewater affluent for any traces of COVID. At no cost to the city. As you all know, there's been discussions about possibilities of COVID going through the wastewater. And so we'll be working with MDNR to ensure that our staff isn't being subjected to that. And if it is, then we have plans on how to deal with that. But that's a a good process to have and we're thankful that it'll be at no cost to the city. The additional parts with park and recreational, Alderman Turner talked about the outdoor pool. And getting in the final bids with that as well as the additional things that project's going to do. I can give you a good report today that, as you all know, the Alderman had approved the short term financing. For those projects and I am finalizing the opportunity. Of a one point three five percent interest rate that we will get on that project. So it's even below the two percent and so one point three five percent is just astounding. As well as part of that we put with the rolling stock as well. As you all recall, the rolling stock is the the vehicles, the equipment and everything that you all had approved in the budget. We had anticipated in the budget on the rolling stock that it could be no higher than three percent. That also came in at one point three five percent on the rolling stock. And so we should see significant savings on both those items on the interest. And so we're happy about that because that means it's more opportunity for capital for the parks. As well as saving money on our equipment cost for the city. The staff has been doing a lot of training this month. If I think I send out anything else about training, they may revolt. But we've had a lot of things that we've been implementing for this year. We've, as you all remember, we went to the Microsoft three sixty five. All the department heads and managers went through review last week with Microsoft on all the. Capabilities of the Microsoft three sixty five, how we can more streamline our process for staff. How we can better share documents and be able to work on documents together. I want to thank Jeremy and William for working ahead of time on the back end of things to make sure that it was a good training. And putting those functions in for us to have better communication all across the city. As well as streamlining our processes. Additional training that's been going in for the performance evaluations, goal setting is going on across the city. With all the, with all employees and department heads and supervisors be meeting with those staff, implementing those goals. Those goals are goals that are needs within the departments as well as goals that the Aldermen have outlined for the city. To make sure that we're accomplishing the direction that you as a Board of Aldermen have established for the direction of the city. With the with the addition of those trainings, we've had a, we're getting ready for the audit. And so this toward the end of this month, finance staff are getting all the documents and getting things prepared for. The audit process and hopefully that'll be completed within the first quarter as well to you all. Then we've had. The additional trainings that are going to be coming up, which are the yearly trainings that will be for all staff that are required. From the the training of workplace violence, sexual harassment, all of the required annual trainings. And a lot of that, all this training on the HR side of things is through B K D Company, which is the HR firm that the city utilizes. For HR process. The mayor mentioned earlier that all these is putting the foundation. Getting ready to put a foundation in. There's been some questions that we received on the medical dispensary project. It's about eighty percent from what inspections and corrections. We don't have an anticipated opening date yet based on that review. We also have a plan review that came in and a permit for QuickTrip. They're doing a interior remodel to the QuickTrip. It's my favorite place to go. And so we're glad to see that going as well. Then we have the. January the fourteenth, we had a pre pre proposal meeting. If you all recall, within the budget, it's been since two thousand and two, since a update to the comprehensive plan has happened for the city. We sent out the RFP for that on the fourth of January. We had thirteen consultants that were on that video review. Seven are local consultants and six are from outside the state. We've got Colorado, Chicago, Philadelphia, Nebraska, and Ohio. So we've got a really good wide review of different consulting firms that we will be hopefully receiving. Those bids and once we get to that point, we'll of course notify the board where that is. Because we'll be having lots more meetings as that'll be a part of a public meetings and a part of that. To address what Alderman Zaring had mentioned about with the school district. One of the things that I had been in discussions with the county and the school district. We started having that discussions around November of having more quarterly meetings together as a group. I came, I guess I came up with the main, the name of the Harrisonville Alliance Meetings. That's the meeting that is tomorrow night. Those meetings are with the school district and the school board as well as the county commission and any other county offices. You as Alderman and then key staff in each of those agencies. The point of those quarterly meetings is to have those type of discussions, Alderman Zaring, of what we have coming up. Projects that we have coming up, operational things that we have coming up. So that the county is well aware, the the school district's well aware, as well as we're aware. And we have those meetings on a consistent basis so that we're sharing information, sharing ideas. And working more cooperatively together. It's a lot of times better to have those in face meetings. So that way that you all can get to know one another as well as we can get to know one another. And we can create that more team atmosphere on all levels. And so that's why I called it the Harrisonville Alliance Meetings. Because it's really about Harrisonville and and the promotion of our community and to work with all of the three partners that are key. For our community. So hopefully you'll be seeing a lot more of that information. Like I said, the first one is tomorrow night. We'll have more discussions with them and we will. Have more of those meetings set out for throughout the year on those quarterly meetings. So we're looking forward to that, to be able to implement that type of cooperation and and open dialogue. As we go that way. We also received information and are getting distributed. For our first responders on the vaccination of COVID. The question has been asked to us in the previous times that the city is mandating that. We are not mandating those vaccinations, but we are making them available to our first responders for the city. And so between the police department as well as EMS and Public Works. Those are the opportunities that the staff will be afforded to them. Then we, staff from the city administrators pointed out by the mayor. Then we, staff from the city administrators pointed out by the mayor and the aldermen tonight want to give our condolences to the Codey family. I know that Chief Myler has worked with him for twenty-one years. And so you create a lot of, of close bondage and friendship. And so my condolences to their family as well as to our EMS and fire department family, which we know that they're hurting as well from the loss of their coworker and, and their comrade. And with that, Madam Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Ratliff. Questions from the media? We actually have Dennis here in the room with us, socially distanced, of course. Okay, I want to just thank the board for the great discussion that we had this evening over the request of the school district. I thank you for the fact that you recognize the value of that strategic partnership that we have with the school district. And I just think it was great discussion and I want to acknowledge you. I have department heads on the Zoom meeting with us. Does anyone have comments or questions or anything you want to share with the board tonight? I'll take that as a no. All right, again, Chief Myler, please extend our condolences on behalf of the Board of Aldermen to your staff and to the other firefighters and brothers that, that you know that are going to miss Captain Codey. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Davidson with a second from Alderman Reese. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Thank you. We're adjourned. Good night.